Everybody ready? Okay. Okay, calling to order the special meeting for the inter-fund transfer hearing. Roll call, please. Here. He's here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. For any of you watching, Mr. Hartman is here attending the meeting via Zoom. So you may not be able to see him, but he is present. And we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items on the inter-fund transfer hearing. Do we have any public comments this evening? No, so the mask-related comments, we will read into the regular meeting because public comment is limited right now just to the inter-fund transfer hearing. So we see your comments, hold on, they will be part of the regular meeting. Thank you. If anyone has comments related to the inter-fund transfer hearing, please feel free to add those now. We'll give you a minute to do so. Okay, I'm not seeing any additional comments or any comments specifically related to the inter-fund transfer hearing. Eric, are you seeing anything? Okay, so again, we'll, we'll hold off on those mask comments and those will be read into the business meeting, but right now for the inter-fund transfer hearing, we do not see any public comments. So we will move on to the business agenda for the hearing. We have all of the information related to that in the board packet. The hearing was appropriately noticed. Okay, and then we now move on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Um, I would prefer to defer the mask comments to the next meeting, just so we can group them all together and give everyone the opportunity to participate. So we will do that, don't worry, your comment will be shared and will be read to the board. If we have any other comments, you can go ahead and make those now. And if not, we will adjourn into the business meeting where we can proceed with the rest of this evening's business. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Yes. Okay, great. So that concludes the inter-fund transfer hearing, and now we're moving on to the business meeting itself. Could I get a roll call, please, again for that? Here. Here. Okay, now we will move on to public comments on agenda items only. Um, masks are not on the agenda for this evening. The board is going to discuss the latest rulings and guidance from our law firm. And we were good, are going to be working with the leadership team on the plan moving forward, and we will communicate that out when we have that shortly. For expediency's sake, and because I know people are attending, we can go forward with those comments now, even though they're not related specifically to anything on tonight's agenda. So, Mr. Hanson, if you want to read those into the meeting, that would be great. If anyone has any other comments related to items on the agenda or to masks, please feel free to add those now, and we will read them into the meeting now. Thank you.
So the first comment, I'm sorry, comment is, we ask that the district officially states that masks are no longer required as per the JCA ruling today. And then second comment, the governor's statewide school mask mandate is no longer in effect after the bipartisan group of lawmakers voted to object to the governor's extension of the emergency rule. Here's more information on today's JCA proceedings from the Illinois House of Republicans. The bicameral joint committee administrative rule voted 9-0-2 today to block reimbursement of temporary reinstating, I'm sorry, restraining order issued by Sangamon County Circuit Court Judge Raylene Grishow declaring the parents, sorry, declaring the governor's emergency rules as they apply to schools null and void. Parents and children across Illinois deserve certainty and clarity amid all the confusion and chaos created by Governor Pritzker's decision to continually go alone and work only through the courts instead of with stakeholders and families. Representative Wheeler said in a statement, locally elected school boards who are accountable to parents and know best.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other public comments this evening? Mr. Hanson, can you share that name with us, please?
Lisa Bruins.
Okay, thank you. Okay. If there are no other public comments, then we will move on to presentations this evening.
Thank you. Tonight's presentation is going to be our winter assessment update. And Dr. Drocka, as well as the principals, will be sharing by school our progress made this on the second benchmark for winter from fall to winter. So I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Drocka. And also, I'm sorry, one thing, the presentation has been translated in Spanish and Ms. Carrera is available. So if there are any questions that you have in Spanish, Ms. Carrera is happy to translate those for you.
Well, good evening. This is just a follow-up from the, from the fall STAR assessment data. So you'll see very similar charts, graphs related to the STAR assessment data. So this first slide that I'll just share just goes back to the RTI response to intervention tiers. That, that is sort of our framework for how we approach providing students who need additional support with those additional minutes of instruction in either math or ELA. So going back to what I had explained, again, in the fall, tier one is baseline instruction for all students. All students receive tier one instruction. That typically is those students between the 30th percentile and the 99th percentile. Students between the 29th and 12th percentiles are considered in tier two. They will receive additional supports or intensive supports in either ELA and math. And then students in tier three are the 11th percentile to the first percentile. Those are the students who need the most extensive interventions. And so I'm just a reminder that we give the STAR assessment three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, while we're encouraged by the data that the principals will share with you tonight. It was just a reminder that sometimes the winter assessment data, because of some of the, the attendance-related issues that occurred this past winter with so many absences and disruptions, there's some, probably just some minor nuances there to take into consideration. But beyond that, the principals, I think, have some very encouraging data to share with you. So with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Berger, who will share with you the information related to DLS.
Thank you. So just as a reminder, in the English Language Arts category, there are two types of assessments that are given on this STAR for early childhood. One being early literacy, which is our foundational language skills, where this, these are children who are still working on their alphabet, phonemic awareness, vocabulary, things of that nature. And then there is the STAR test that is for reading, that has to do more with the comprehension piece, author, argument, vocab, higher vocabulary and comprehension. So when we look at our scores comparatively, starting at the very top, our number of students who took the early literacy assessment, starting with tier one, we had 28 students who took it in the fall, only seven in the winter. 22, I'm sorry, at tier one, at tier two, we had 22 in the fall and 15 in the winter. And then for tier three, we had 22 in the fall and 19 in the winter. And looking at it in the early literacy test, this is where we would actually want to see that there are less children that took that assessment, because they were able to perform now on the reading assessment more so than the basic foundational early literacy. The STAR test for first grade went from 32 students in tier one to 47 in the winter. Tier two was three students in the fall to six students in the winter. And tier three was two students in the fall and two students in the winter. And again, when we look at that change in the scores, it's not just the progression that children made on the same assessment, but that, that they went from those different levels of doing the early literacy onto the reading. And then in second grade, when we look at tier one, in the fall, we had one student that needed the early literacy exam, zero in the winter. Tier two, five students in the fall and three students in the winter. And then tier three, 16 students in the fall and 21 in the winter. And when we go back and look at that data with our teams, we're really pulling that apart to figure out exactly why there were so many more students in second grade that scored within the tier three on the early literacy exam. And that's part of what we're looking at with things such as COVID, absence, all of those kinds of pieces. And then when we look at second grade STAR in the fall, tier one, we had 32 compared to 42 in the winter. Tier two, 11 students compared to seven in the winter. And then tier three, 24 in the fall and 23 in the winter. So that number stayed about the same. But again, when we look at how many students shifted from the early literacy to the reading exam, we saw some great growth across both grade levels. And then for the math exam, first grade, we had 60 students in tier one in the fall compared to 74 in the winter, 22 in the fall in tier two and 13 in the winter. And then three in tier three and 16 in tier three in the winter. So there's a little bit of an outlier there, and the first grade team has been really pulling this data apart to figure out exactly why there was such a shift there. Some of it might have been, again, you know, what we talked about with absence, but also how much more in-depth the concepts get as the school year goes on and putting all of those pieces together. So they've been working really hard with our math interventionists to make sure that we're targeting those specific skills that students might still be struggling with. And then for second grade, we had 34 in the fall in tier one, 47 in the winter. Tier two, we had 19 in the fall compared to 15 in the winter. And then tier three, we had 26 in the fall compared to 17 in the winter. Second grade did an excellent job on the math assessment growth throughout all three tiers. So we're really proud to see that. And then looking at what data was telling us, just like what we've been talking about, we did see some increasing in performance in both first and second grade for ELA and math. And a lot of those things were, of course, due to the plans that we had in place that we presented in the fall and that have been going on for the last couple of months, such as increased guided reading time for all tiers, redesigning our ELA block, having more push-in and pull-out services by our interventionists, and also with our special ed staff, developing the wind block that gave some specific time for targeted skills for specific children who needed that extra help, the rework of our building schedule, and also just our focus on professional development and what we're doing with cooperative learning strategies and our coaches that we have in our building. And with that, Mr. Preble.
Thank you, Dr. Berger. Over at the intermediate school, we will continue the success story. We've seen some trends in the, in the right direction. As I walk you through the, the reading scores, we can see that in third grade, we increased our tier one numbers from 38 to 43, decreased our tier two from 15 to 12, and decreased our tier three from 20 to 15. Everybody's going in the right direction there. Fourth grade, same story, we've increased by one student in, in tier one, decreased by a couple in tier two, and our outlier is we had an increase in of four in our tier three from fall to winter. Looking at the comparison between the roster of students who took it, or who were in tier three in the fall versus tier three in the winter, there's a couple of different things that we're diving into. As Dr. Berger mentioned, some of it has to do with attendance and then the skill set that are, that are being tested. I do know for a fact, in, in a couple of the cases, we had some students absent, and they came back about two days before we went on winter break and we assessed them. Maybe not what we should have done there, but, so we don't know if they're top of their game. But we're talking four students there, the trend is, is clearly in the right direction. The real success story that we've been celebrating is our fifth grade swing, 47 to 58, fall to winter in tier one, a drop in tier two and a significant drop in tier three as well. So we really are, you know, I've, I've talked before about the pyramid, right? We want to have most of our kids in that tier one, then tier two, smaller tier three. We're really reshaping our pyramid to, to look how it's supposed to. And over to the math. Math, we're seeing more of the same trend, third grade increased from 42 to 47 in tier one, with a decrease in tier two and tier three. As a matter of fact, in general ed map and one of our homerooms, and they combine, so it's not just one home teacher versus the other, but one of our rosters, nobody was in tier three anymore. So that was pretty cool in third grade. Fourth grade, we're seeing a big jump from 37 to 48 in tier one, a big decrease in tier two, and we were one less in tier three. So that's a, again, trending in the right direction. Again, fifth grade, 47 to 51, a nice increase. We're dropping in tier two and a significant drop in tier three. So everything is going in the right direction. So we talk about what we're doing at the intermediate school. Back in the fall, if I can have the next slide. Back in the fall, we talked about how the data is telling us, in this case, we're decreasing in tiers two and three for both ELA and math, which is great. But I talked about supporting more tier one instruction in, so that's in the classroom and the home room, bringing those interventionists in. We are still in the process of doing that. We're not, we're not home by any means with that remodel of how we're doing things. We're working on it, we're getting there. But continuing that, along with just making sure that the things that are happening inside our literacy block are making sense. One of the biggest changes that we made this year is how we are doing guided reading. Not so much that we're, you know, we've always been doing guided reading, but now with the F and P program that we're using, it's a little bit more structured, a little bit more in-depth, and with the help of our coaches, the teachers are really digging in and getting a more in-depth experience for the students during guided reading. And I believe that's made a huge impact, just in the few months we've been doing it. And then we're working with taking structures to, to increase our cooperative learning. So our kids are talking with each other, they're learning from each other. It's not just, you know, what the teacher is saying, but it's the questions that students are asking each other within the classroom and then sharing that out. So everybody's learning even more, and we're just gonna keep going with that. It's working, we're just gonna keep building toward that. With that, I'll hand it over to the middle school.
So middle school, again, a lot of Test. My apologies. Let's start from the top. So we've, again, a lot of great news, a lot of great information here. We're seeing students move and, and we're okay with, for example, if you see in seventh grade, the tier two increases, that's okay, they're coming out of tier three, so we're always happy to see that. As long as we see tier one also go up, that's what we want to see. So that's happening across the board there. Like I mentioned, there's just two students in sixth grade, and one of them came to me actually very upset with himself the other day, I was like, man, totally, it's okay, buddy, we're gonna get it. So he, they, those two students know they're in the right support and, and they're gonna do well next time around. But overall, in a good place we like to be, we like to see, especially as our students leave in eighth grade, start finishing strong and seeing those numbers continue to grow. If we jump over to math, again, also very strongly love to see that movement from right to left. We're seeing that at every grade level. If there's any increase in tier two, it's because they came out of tier three, which is great. That's what we want to see all around. And again, you always love to see at eighth grade them finishing strong like that. Those are some high numbers for eighth grade, which is what we want to continue to see happen for us all the way through. And really, at all grade levels, we beat the national, and this can be said really for all three buildings, we beat the national average for growth, which is what we want. We want to see our students growing and, and every area with a six, up or six ELA held, but every other area we caught, we're catching the national median score, which is what we want, because it shows not only are students growing, the attainment is there as well. And for example, in eighth grade math, I think we're like three points off of it. So we've been, over the years, we've seen that close more and more. And so we're really proud of that kind of progression, as we want to see that. So good success stories there. And then if you want to go to the next slide, Mr. Hanson. Essentially, what we're doing, I mean, we're, the, what's the data telling us? They're, they are trending in the right direction, especially our tier three. We shared, I think, earlier that we really had exited all of our, you see those tier three numbers, for example, in eighth grade for ELA, those are all students in our EL program or on special education, which of course are getting additional supports and, and we're working with them as well. But really, this is just a list of the same process that we shared in the fall. And kind of the message being, we feel very good about what we're doing. It's nice when the data reflects that and shows it. And so this is a case where it does, you know, and we'll continue to work with our eighth grader. It's always really with the eighth grade, it's nice to see fall to winter be so strong. The spring scores of the eighth grade, we're gonna, we work hard to motivate, but sometimes the spring scores aren't as strong as their winter ones. But we're gonna continue to challenge them and they'll continue to grow with hope. So, yeah, that's it for the middle school.
Just to round out the presentation, from a district perspective, some of the performance levers that we've just tried to put in place this year to help improve our and increase the number of students in our tier one program, really start with, for the first time since I've been here in the last seven years, we have an after-school program that runs basically first grade through eighth grade, supporting kids with additional minutes. And that's really a key to providing students with those supports. They need those additional minutes, and we plan to do those same things later on down the road in summer school as well. Can't thank the board enough and the district leadership team for the work in supporting our instructional coaching program. Not only your support, but then also the principals who support and, and work with these coaches on a daily basis to strengthen our balanced literacy framework to move, move us forward with curriculum and development and assessment development. The coaches are working with our professional learning communities, with our grade level teams to analyze data and, and direct instruction. They're working with teachers to improve instructional practice. Our IT coaches are supporting teachers in the use of instructional technology in the classroom. And this year, one of the things we're focusing on is our cooperative learning strategies. So those instructional coaches are working alongside teachers to help support them in creating a highly engaging classroom for our kiddos. Then the last component was just that the district leadership team is really focused on RTI this year, really putting in place the right structures and systems, as, as the principals have measured, mentioned, some schedule changes, some things that we've shifted around to really give intentional focus to those kids that are in tier two and in tier three. We're utilizing the Edge of Kellimer data management system to be hyper-focused on student data, making sure that we're understanding where our kids are at and what are some of the, the things that we can do to help improve them, or help them improve, rather, in both ELA and math. So again, from the district perspective, just sort of infused some, some new life into some programs to help support, you know, what has happened over the last two years with some of, some of the learning loss or slowed learning that was related to the pandemic. And as the principals have shared, we've seen some good growth and we anticipate, you know, now, you know, the, the first assessment was in September and then taken in December. So there's about three, three months there. Now with four months in between, you know, January and then, and then mid-May, we're hoping to see those trends continue with those same levers in, in place. Any, any questions that you may have?
This is really all very, very thorough information. Thank you so much. Um, I know it's a, it might be hard to ask because of the pandemic and going remote. All of this data is wonderful based on what have, what has been implemented. Do you have data from years prior? Were we more stagnant? You know, just to show that what you guys are implementing, I can see right now from fall to, or from fall to winter, that there's definitely been growth, but are you seeing that as opposed to in years prior, where maybe it was more stagnant? Or do you not have those numbers in the way that you have these numbers?
Yeah, we actually do. The last couple of years have been interrupted. So there's been some, you know, some, some interruptions there. But even going back to what Peter and was mentioning in terms of the growth at the middle school, what we tend to see and what we have seen over the last seven years in this district is that our students, largely because about 50% of them in K through four are English language learners, there tends to be slower growth in those grade levels. I would also say that our dual-language program also stymies some of their growth, because kids are learning in two directions. So with that, what we've seen is that when kids tend to get to fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, their growth accelerates, because they kind of overcome that language barrier, some of the challenges that exist. So we tend to see greater growth. That has been a trend over the last, last seven years. We tend to see, generally speaking, around a 53 student growth percentile, meaning that our kids grow faster, faster than 53% of the, the nation. So that's typical. We're seeing those same types of general trends at this point as well. I would say that we still have work to do, and I do think that it's going to be indicative or imperative that we look at the impact of some of these programs, specifically like the after-school program, as we come to a conclusion this year, to get some greater detail in terms of whether or not that that was impactful. And so that's gonna be one of the things on our radar. But I would say, generally speaking, these are typical trends that we see. They're the trends in the right direction, and for our district and the demographics of our district, this is very typical in that we see slower growth in the, the early years, and we see accelerated growth in the, in the later years. Sure. And I can, if I can just add a couple, couple of quick comments, just the thoughtfulness by the, the district leadership team and the principals in terms of the process this year has been really exceptional. And a lot of that goes back to, you know, your support and your supporting us with some of the after-school initiatives, with instructional coaching, all of that allows us, principals, to be able to implement some of these processes, which really make for a really rich learning experience. Sometimes it's difficult to draw the through lines between one initiative and student achievement, because there are so many variables that go into achievement. But I feel very confident in saying that our process is strong in this district. So I'm, I'm very proud of that and proud of our, proud of the team. I feel very confident in saying that our process is strong in this district. So I'm very proud of that and proud of our, proud of the team.
Any other questions? Hey, I'm just going to echo what Nicole said, and thank you for all of your work. I know that there's been a lot of creative thinking and different approaches taken this year, and it's great to see that all of those changes and the hard work pay off in terms of these results. So way to go. Keep up the good work. We appreciate it. And that concludes our presentations for this evening. So now we will move on to our business agenda. The first item on the business agenda is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items. That item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda, items A through E as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, the second item on our agenda this evening is the release of executive session minutes. It resolved the District Seventy-Six Board of Education approves the release of closed session minutes from board meetings held between July twenty twenty one and December twenty twenty one. The list of executive session minutes as follows. July twentieth, twenty twenty one. August third, twenty twenty one. August eighteen, or August seventeenth, twenty twenty one, September fourteenth, twenty twenty one, September twenty first, twenty twenty one. October nineteenth, twenty twenty one, November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, and December fourteenth, twenty twenty one. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion was passed. And the final item on our business agenda for this evening is the resolution authorizing the transfer from the educational fund to the operations and maintenance fund. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lakes School District Seventy-Six Board of Education approves a nine hundred thousand dollar interfund transfer from the education fund to the operations and maintenance fund. May I have a motion to approve, please? Second. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. That concludes our business agenda for the evening. And we will now move on to board discussion.
So I'd like to take this opportunity to hand the floor over to Mr. Cunningham. But first, in front of all of you is a star-shaped cookie that I did not make in my own kitchen, Margaret. Even though you did ask. But at the January board meeting, I know you heard from Mr. Cunningham that he had applied, he and his team had applied for a schools to watch application. And they were coming a few days later. And as we saw last week with the publication, that West Oak Middle School did earn that distinction. So I'm going to hand the floor over to Mr. Cunningham so we can share a little bit more about the award, what it means, and what next steps are for our staff and our students.
You, Dr. Sean Lewis. Yes. Thankfully, because I shared it, we did get it. We're incredibly excited about it. We it, just to give you an idea, again, just to recap it a little bit, I feel a little bit looser now that we won the award. Talk about it that you know, really, it's kind of the I I would consider it the biggest national, like, middle school, Mississauga specific award you can get. And so it was about a sixty eighty-page application really to go through the process. We had a full writing team, about eleven people that were on that piece. Only State University reviews it, and there's a, it's a thirteen-page rubric really that we had to self-assess on. And really what they're looking at are four areas. They're looking at our academic excellence, which they, obviously, in all these areas, they found that we are a model school for that and how we address our academics. And the second one being social equity, which we're giving every student a voice and really every stakeholder includes parents as well in the community. That we are, our organizational structures and processes are very, are exemplary in how we organize ourselves. Let's the whole district bore down to the teachers and then developmental responsiveness. So how we work with students based on whatever their needs are and that we find. So they, we had a site visit come in and they looked at a number of different panels. They went into every classroom, interviewed a number of students and teachers really as they did that. They shared that they found it to be one of the most enjoyable visits they've ever done with our school, and they were so impressed that the teacher group, the social, the student services group, the parent group, and the student group were all all completely aligned in what they shared and what they're proud of as a school and what they would love to see continue to happen. It was just a really cool thing. So we we basically have joined, we're one of only there's only thirty-one other middle schools in Illinois that have gotten this award since we, you know, like, brought it in in two thousand and three. Two in Lake County, one in Barrington, one in Libertyville, are the only other two that have gotten it before. So we're, we're, we're going to, we, our staff were very excited on Friday. They found out, really proud. And, you know, just want to thank the board, first of all, your support, join Margaret, who sat on committees to be a part of that as well. Daisy, I knew who was on there. Has translated and helped bring our VPAC parents in, and that was a huge piece of what we did. Our DLT and the presentation from Avna brand did a huge piece of this. Our whole staff, really, our students edited our essays to make sure they were good. Uh, so that was a ton of fun to have them get their feedback and our student panel stood a wonderful job as well. So it was wonderful. We explained to the kids, they wanted to know if they got money. We said, no. But we will party with them. So we're going to do a whole day of celebration. They'll give us a big banner. Things we'll put up, a delegation. We had to agree when we applied a delegation, we'll go to Washington DC at the national conference to receive the award with the other schools that we recognize really for the last three years. Because they've had to cancel the conference for the last couple of years. So our, our, our staff is very proud. Our, I, the kids are excited that no other mund liner, Stevens and Peters have gotten it. They feel pretty cool about it. They should. This is very difficult to get. That's the reality. I know some of the some members of the board got to see the rubric and some of the things that go into it. So nothing was made up, and they were impressed with the authenticity of what we do. And that's a district-wide thing. We just happened to capture it at the middle school. So but we're very excited. Our, our, our teachers are walking around proud. Our kids are, they are, but they don't totally get it. We're helping them. So there, it, it's been great. So thank you again to everybody for your support.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. We're really proud. And I think it's really nice to finally have some widespread recognition of all the really hard work that goes on here. Because I think as a board, we're able to see what you guys do every day. We're able to see what our staff, our teachers do every day, what the kids are doing every day. But it's nice to be able to share that out and to be able to celebrate all of that. So congratulations to everyone. That's awesome. Okay, I'm moving on to FOIA requests. We do not have any notices and communications. We have just a reminder of the board meeting calendar. And then moving on to public comments, we now open the floor back up to public comment and petition on non-agenda items. Again, if you're attending virtually, please feel free to type those in the chat box. We'll read them into the meeting. I do not see any right now, but we can give you a second to go ahead and do that if you so wish.
Um, we have a comment. Please review the JCAR ruling immediately and schedule another board meeting to end the mask mandates.
And could you read the name, please?
Lisa Bruns.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments? Okay, moving on to others.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly recognize our principals. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to attend the principal's chat last week. But I was, I was a participant. I wasn't on the panel. And I was just so incredibly impressed. I sent them a note, but I wanted to say it publicly. Just the vast amount of and variety of topics that they had to cover. I think, you know, I'm a recovering principal. I was a principal for ten years thirteen years ago, and how the evolution of the principalship has changed, especially in the past three years. And how our four principals have stepped up and just done such an incredible job of I think, educating not only our children, but also our teachers and our families and our community. They talked about assessments. They talked about social emotional learning. They talked about vaccinations. They talked about parent education opportunities and, you know, just reaching out the kindness efforts, you know, and just all the community outreach that they're doing. I just want to thank them so much for putting the time and the effort into doing that. And obviously, you can see that their efforts are paying off in the score, in the presentation that you saw today. I want to thank Dr. Draca and his work with the instructional leadership team because his coordination of the district leaders at the teacher level and then going down into the buildings and working with the instruction, not going down, but working through the buildings, leadership teams as well as the instructional coaches has done an excellent job. You can see that it's measurable. Mr. Rogers for supporting all of us with the resources happily, I may add. And Mr. Hanson for putting it all together with technology and supporting, doing all the behind-the-scenes stuff, especially with the, you know, the parent education or, excuse me, the principal chat last week. And I know last week too, Dr. Olson did a really nice job of presenting the difference for parent education, the difference between an IEP and a five oh four. So I just want to commend the entire team for just going above and beyond their daily responsibilities of just working within the four walls of the school and just reaching out to so many of the stakeholders that we have. So thank you publicly from the bottom of my heart for all that you do.
Thank you for that. My other is very anticlimactic. I just wanted to remind everyone that, in case you didn't know, as January first, the statement of economic interest that we all fill out has completely changed, and there's new instructions as well. And there's supposed to be guidance issued, I believe, coming this week. So I believe you can start filling out that form relatively soon, but it's recommended that you wait for the guy guidance that you understand exactly what you're filling out. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. Yes, you have to fill it out every year. Okay, um, are there any other others? Okay, then we will adjourn to executive session for collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And for litigation, when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal. Or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the closed meeting minutes. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, please? Yes. Okay, thank you.